July Board Voting Meeting. This is one of the rare times in the year where we don't have a board workshop the week prior to cover the agenda items. So this voting meeting will be a little different than the ones we've had previously where more recently we reduced the consent agenda. So board members, just be mindful and still condense your motions, but we'll still want to make sure we have ample opportunity to talk about any items on the agenda. Obviously, you want to go quickly as you can, Mr. --
No.
-- Geller. No, you're okay?
I'm going to stretch it out.
You want to stretch out the minutes?
Thanks, Karen.
Yeah. Try to hold you here so you can't get the vacation that you want. Aren't you leaving tomorrow? Okay, we'll be here tomorrow. So, welcome, everybody. We're going to start off with the Pledge of the Flag.
The Pledge of the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Just before we get started this evening, I just wanted to mention that we did have an executive session prior to the board meeting for us to discuss legal matters. And the next item on the agenda is a recognition, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Phillips.
Camera guy. Thank you. Thank you. We are here tonight to honor a community member who has stepped up in a time of need on more than one occasion, specifically for the district, though. You might recall, a couple of years ago, there was some concern of May Days going away. And then this gentleman was the bulwark in getting a committee together and really captaining, if you will, May Days to what it is today. If anyone is at the event this summer, it was a fantastic event, and it was to his credit what had happened. He was again in charge of the whole shoot match. That's not only where it ends. He's been involved in other events in the community. I know he's been really big in helping the district come through with the Heroes event. We had a homecoming due to some weather events that was unforeseen, which was, which included some fireworks for homecoming. And that was a special treat for the team and all the students. And then every time we scored a touchdown, unfortunately for some of the community, we scored a lot of touchdowns that night. Good for the team, but it was a loud night, but then afterwards, the spectators retreated to an event. I can go on and on. I mean, he's involved in a lot of things, but I just wanted to express the district's appreciation for all he's done. I want to ask that some of the representatives from ECEF would come forward as well to help recognize him with a brick in your honor that will be placed out in front of the high school where all the other bricks are laid near the Big Eagle. So if you would come forward, please, to accept on behalf of the district as well as ECEF and the alumni.
Thank you, sir. Absolutely.
I want to thank the board for allowing this to happen, of course. Thank Dr. Phillips. It's been great to work with the board and the school in collaboration, the folks on Dr. Phillips' team. Tom McGaff, Rob, have been wonderful to work with. So we did, had a really nice event. I know a lot of people probably want to throw this at me. I want to throw this at Jerry, but it'll be nice since it's such a nice break. So, I think, thank the board, thank the, we definitely want to collaborate more on the township level with my role there. So some exciting things coming with some stuff working with Mike and Hunter and the rest of you guys. So we're excited for Exeter and just want to, again, thank everybody for this opportunity and thank especially Amy and her team. It's been phenomenal to work with them, I know. I love working with Amy, so I think as long as Amy's involved in ECEF, I'll do almost anything. And I just want to thank my five school volunteers, actually four, I think somebody's from New York or something, somebody's friend from New York. But those four girls did a tremendous, tremendous job. They worked, you know, the entire two days. They did really great work, didn't complain about anything. Yeah, actually, you want to bring them up and say your name? Most are going to 10th grade, but yeah, you want to say your name because they were inch and out making May Days a success. The four of them did more than 20 kids can do. They were just top-notch. Just say your name and what grade you're going to.
Allison's going into 10th grade.
Katie McKinney going into 10.
Joanna Mappert going into 10.
Lauren Bauer is going into 10.
So again, thank you, everyone. I got to have to talk again now. Thank you guys for your work, too. Does he got to give you that brick back now? Can't go with it. All right. Gentlemen, on behalf of the board, too, I think we all kind of share the same feelings as expressed by Dr. Phillips and just enjoy the fact that we feel like we have a new opportunity to work, I think, more effectively with the township and also your civic involvement. I think in May Days is really commendable and your organization and hours and hours you put into that, I think, really speaks a lot, so.
Yeah, I saw you went to 1st grade.
Yes. See, thanks very much for coming this evening. And thanks to you guys, too, for coming out. Have a nice evening. Okay, we'll move on in our agenda. And our next item is a presentation by Alicia Lenhart, who is our SAP program coordinator at the high school, and she's going to give us the 2018-19 update. We always appreciate Alicia coming out, you know, for these summaries of how the year went, and I'm sure we have a lot of questions as well. So thanks for being here.
So I gave you, you guys all have it, right? That's the PowerPoint. No.
I just have one.
Did you just have two?
No, I just have one.
Okay. Everything in there is self-explanatory. I mean, you guys have seen this before, but I wanted to do some highlights. I looked at 2015 to last year and including this year, just to kind of give you guys a perspective on where we were at and where we've been. So in 2015-2016 school year, we had no satellite-based mental health services at Exeter. So that means Progressions was not in any of our buildings in 2015-2016. We had no elementary SAP services at that point in time in 2015-2016. And we had just started doing reentry meetings, and reentry meetings are having really big meetings when a student is coming back from any type of placement into the building. And we just started doing really good comprehensive, well, started doing suicide or crisis meetings. So that year was like a big year. And yet, it was a big year, and we still didn't have services at the elementary building, and we still were missing a lot of components. Fast forward to 2016-2017 school year, and we started reentry meetings at the junior high as well as at the high school. So, and they were getting successful. We still did not have elementary student assistance in that school year. We started Progressions that year, so we started our satellite-based mental health provider, and we started seeing every student at the high school on the first day of school and giving them information on crisis information and student assistance information. Okay. Move into the 2017-2018 school year. The reentry meetings are at the high school and the junior high, and they're starting to have some down at Reifton. We have elementary services, now not a lot, but we have elementary services in there. We're adding a prevention program to Lorraine and O'Whan Creek that year. We're getting kind of control of the satellite-based mental health provider, and what I mean by that is kind of seeing where we can get kids in if the provider that's at the school is really the one that we want to use, or do we want to use someone outside of the school? And that, we got a handle on. I think we started to get more of a handle on that in the 17-18 school year. And our homeless work went up, and out of the high school, we had about 40 to 50 out of 232 referrals that came directly from parents. So parents were directly calling us and asking for student assistance services. So in that year, the 2017-2018 year, I thought, boy, we really like are doing great work. Like I thought, this isn't, how are we going to get better, really? Because we were, I thought we really hit a good spot last year. So we get into this school year, and we had an addition of a really great school counselor at Reifton, Kate. And I can't think of Kate's last name, no, Atkinson's. And she noticed that we were all doing our crisis screenings differently at every building and was like, we really should have something more uniformed. So we took a look at Act 71, which is the Suicide Prevention Act, worked with it, developed a screening, contacted both hospitals, decided to work more in conjunction with the high school, trained everyone in the district that needed to be trained. And we had, by the end of the school year, at the junior high and at the high school, we had kids that were identifying suicidal ideations on their own and coming down to us and asking for help before they had even done anything. And we had a really good, good system and process and protocol in place. Now, doesn't mean that it can't, we can't fine-tune it for next year, but this year, we really worked hard at it, and I think we really did some great things with the Act 71. With our reentry meetings, the goal is for next year to be making sure that we're doing reentry meetings at every level. So trying to get somebody at every elementary reentry meeting, at every Reifton reentry meeting, at every junior high reentry meeting, so that we have a really comprehensive plan when a student is coming back so that they're successful in coming back from treatment. But it's doing well. Homeless services, homeless students went up this year way more than ever, and thankfully to Kathy Cordoli, who really helped a lot with those this year. We really worked with a lot of different agencies this year, not just the PCIU, but we worked with Mary Shelter, we worked with Family Promise. We were better at getting families into homeless shelters and services and then getting them connected into other houses, and we were good at that at every level. What else? Vaping. We did a ton of vaping presentations this year for faculty, for staff, for even administration just recently, and really updating everyone on vaping and drug and alcohol current trends and mental health current trends. And then we also, at the end of this year, worked with all of the health department, and we now will have, going into next year, a K through 12th grade health curriculum that addresses drug and alcohol and mental health at every grade level moving forward. So we, I think we did a tremendous amount of work this year besides from the numbers that are on there. Like I think we really made headway in the services that we're providing here at Exeter. So those were just some highlights of where we're at. And we added an extra, what has changed is this year, we added an extra day to myself so that I could be more available to help out with elementary or junior high or Reifton, wherever I would need to fill in so that I could move around more. And we're looking to add some more time at Reifton for next school year. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I had some questions about vaping.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just kind of wondered, what are you seeing in terms of when kids are starting to become introduced to vaping? What grade level do you see kids starting now?
Well, I think they're being introduced as early as elementary because more and more parents are vaping. So more, more kids are seeing it at home. So they're being introduced to it at home, and we know from statistics with poison control that poison control calls have gone up from younger kids ingesting the E juices and the E liquids that are laying around the house. So we know they're being introduced at that level, and we know that our health curriculum has to address vaping to a certain degree even in our elementary buildings. But then what we're seeing is statistically is that it's more 7th and 8th grade that you're starting. You do have some 5th and 6th graders that are, especially if they have older siblings or it's readily available, but really 7th and 8th grade.
Do we, do we do anything that allows students to anonymously, anonymously report annually their behaviors or habits relative to substances?
We did the PACE survey.
And do we get, do we get those results back yet?
Yes. Yeah, we have that data.
Okay. And what are we seeing in terms of anything in the profile now that reflects any changes or shifts in patterns of behavior or substances?
Vaping has gone up tremendously, and so has marijuana.
Is smoking going down?
Smoking, yes. Smoking has gone down tremendously. It's at the lowest it's ever been, cigarette smoking. But vaping and marijuana use is high, and that's across the United States.
Are our policies regarding vaping sufficient for you to address it from a disciplinary perspective if it's determined to be?
We actually just talked about that at the, at the administrative retreat. We talked about adding into the vaping, the vaping discipline that there would, you would have to have an educational session on it. So you would not only get, you know, a day of in-school or whatever the discipline is in it, but you would have to have a vaping informational session on it, and that nicotine sensation type group would be offered to you. But the educational session would definitely be in place.
Could you touch up how important the educational piece is because the lack of knowledge of what's actually inside?
Yeah. So the most students, and this is also true with marijuana, most students and most parents do not realize what's in vaping, the E juices. They don't, they don't recognize that there's chemicals in there. A lot of them think that there, there are some E liquids that do not have nicotine in them. They're very rare, but there are some, and most kids will tell you that they are using juices that don't have nicotine in them, that they just have flavoring in them. And then when you look at the small print that's on the bottle, it's like this has nicotine in it. But that's not only what is bad about the juices, not only is the nicotine in there, but the chemicals that are in the juices and the flavoring, just in the flavoring causes harm to your lungs. And so a lot of them don't even have any idea what they're, what they're putting into their lungs and the damage that they're doing. So the educational session is key. And then we talked about at the retreat, putting in educational sessions for parents as well. So doing a monthly informational email that talks about vaping with like an infogram on it or what they look like, what are the damages, how you can start talking to your kids about these things so that you can bring them up. Yeah, so we're going to try to really hit some parent sessions next year, and we're going to add into the discipline policy an educational session to go with it.
Is the legislature starting to make any inroads in terms of regulating, you know, vaping products, cigarettes and that sort of thing?
They put a ban on them, so there's no PA indoor ban, so you can't vape inside anymore. And they also, it's 18 to purchase, although they're not as heavily watching it as they were with cigarettes. So they're, they're trying to do more on that. They also put out, FDA just said that you cannot market to use anymore, so a lot of the E juices, some of the E juices look like the Rocket Pops. You know, the Rocket Pops that you can get from like, from the ice cream man that comes around? Some of the E juices actually were designed and looks like, look like a Rocket Pop so that a kid, five-year-old would think, oh, this is a juice just like that, or it looked like an apple juice box. And they just did away, passed law, basically saying that you can't market it that way anymore. So they're changing some of the marketing, but unfortunately, a lot of it's already out there.
Are they going to offer the educational sessions?
Our student assistance liaisons, yes. So SAP team will, yes. And then they're also going to incorporate it in the health curriculum. So all of our health teachers are receiving information from us that has like lesson plans and different things that they can teach at different age levels. But we'll be available to come in as well, too.
This is kind of off, off-the-wall kind of a wacky idea, but have we ever considered bringing doctors or surgeons in to talk to the students about what it, what it actually does to your lungs or presenting pictures about different things like that? I, I just came up with this now thinking about a similar instance with speeding where there was a volunteer firefighter who came in and showed the students pictures of accidents from overturned cars and teams and, you know, something not inappropriately graphic, but graphic in the way that like, oh, my gosh.
In the new, in the new stuff that the high school and the junior high is using on vaping, it has what it actually does to your lungs, it has pictures, it shows the irreversible scarring that's on there. So that it does. And then with the marijuana, Karen is down doing brain scans and doing a lot of neuro stuff, and so we have actual photos of, you know, a teenager at 18 that has not used any substances, and then a teenager at 18 that has used marijuana three times a week for two years and nothing else, and actual scans of brains so that the kids can see like this is actually the damage that it's doing to a brain that's on there. So we are doing that.
Share that with me. I have a couple of buddies who might be interested in doing that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we are going to be using stuff like that, but I, we don't have any doctors coming in, but we're going to be starting to use more things like that.
I think there's just something, maybe potent's the right word, something really potent with the people who actually have to deal with the aftermath and the consequences of those decisions. In, in the same way where you have volunteer firefighter who's been to the crash sites of an overturned car if somebody was speeding or texting and driving. So just food for thought.
Thank you.
Just had a question about mental health. Can I assume that we continue to still have mainly anxiety disorders that you see? Is that the most prevalent?
Yes, most prevalent anxiety followed by depression.
Okay.
More so social anxiety than anything else. I would say that we are doing a very good job at identifying early, and then we have a lot more options here for a student. And I think we're doing a really good job at making teachers aware, and we have a great, we have great teachers at every level, but at the junior high and the high school, getting them involved earlier on with the consent of the student has been happening more and more, and we've been able to come up with some really good plans to help kids get through different situations.
Some kids receive their therapy right in school?
Some kids receive their therapy right in the school. We have Progressions at the high school now, Presgressions is at every level, but we also had Berkshire Psychiatric this year. So Berkshire Psychiatric sold six kids only. They sold kids that had private insurance. So for those kids, the parents still couldn't get them anywhere else, but did have medical assistance, which is what Progression takes. Berkshire Psychiatric sold six of those students.
And it sounds like, just you're talking about the homeless, it sounds like you're taking on some kind of social work roles as well, you know, kind of getting more, you know, directly involved with families and home situations and working with agencies and that sort of thing outside of the district.
I think my position, I think, always since I've been here, has been more of that. When you look at, because I do the SAP maintenances for the county, so I'll go out and I'll maintenance a SAP team over the summer and, or during the school year, I'll help out at Karen. And if you look at my position here, it's really not comparable to what other schools have. Most schools have just a student assistance liaison, not that that's bad, but that's, we tend to do a little bit more here because of being here five days a week and for the length of time that I've been here, we get, I'm able to get involved in a lot of stuff that maybe wouldn't necessarily be what I would do if I was just at a school twice a week. Yeah. So, I mean, Mifflin, us, Cover Wiser, really has some long-term people that have been there a long time and really doing some great work.
Oh, really, I think we're just really fortunate to have you here, you know, with your experience and your, we hear so many great comments about the SAP team and your service at the, at secondary levels, so we really appreciate all you do and, and we know the benefits are there.
The only recommendation, and I own those, what you guys have, and I had given this to, to Dr. Phillips and Dr. Miller as well, is that I think that as we move forward, that the increase should be on the elementary and on Reifton's side. As we are going to increase services or if we are going to add more, I think we need to start adding more at those levels, which we are with Reifton this year coming up. But that's where I think if we can get more and more services in there, then we're going to catch kids as early as we possibly can. So that would just be a recommendation and a goal that I put in for us.
I just have one more question. I think I had asked this last year, but are you seeing kids using ADHD medication for test prep or anything like using Adderall ahead of a long study?
There was a spike. There was a spike for a while, but we haven't seen it. This year, it was not up. It was down this year. But there had been a spike for a couple of years where there were a lot more kids that were using it in that way and at college as well. But it has dropped. Illicit drugs overall, with the exception of marijuana, are all down. Thank you.
Thanks, Alicia. We're going to move on to item five in our agenda. I'm going to say one thing, I don't see, oh, public comments I did before. Opportunity now for members of the audience, anyone in public who would like to make some comments to the board. You have three minutes to state your name and your address. Can't see none. We'll move on to item five minutes. And we have two sets of minutes for approval this evening. The board workshop minutes from June 11th and the board voting meeting, the board voting minutes from June 25th. So it's recommended the board directors approve these two sets of minutes. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Treasurers report. Is there someone who wants to present the treasurer's report?
Well, typically, if there's questions, we'll answer them, but in the past, we've not gone through it in detail. Going forward, if that's your desire, it's been prepared, provided. Well, I can add, say, you know, Alon and I, we are starting our closing entries, so this report does not reflect all of our closing entries. At year end, you make a lot of approvals of revenue and the spends, and we'll be doing that through August. So these are preliminary numbers for year end. There's nothing to highlight.
So we have two items on the treasurer's report. One is the actual report itself, and item B are the payment requests for June 26th through July 16th. So it's recommended the board directors approve those two items on the treasurer's report. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Word policy. We have several items that we've discussed previously that, I believe, finish up our financial section of the, of policies. Local taxpayer bill of rights, Gatsby statement, the benefits, human cards, federal fiscal compliance, travel reimbursement, federal programs, these are all second reading. They're A through F. Does anyone have any voting first? Does anyone have any, voting first, say before I make any further comments, let me just say, it's recommended the board that we approve policies A through F. Any, any, any discussion on any of these policies that I mentioned? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're going to be moving into, thank God, we're moving into the seven hundred section of our policy manual, making headway and we're going to see the end of the light, the end of the tunnel. So, policy seven oh one has to do with facilities planning. Policy seven oh two has to do with gifts, grants and donations. Seven oh three, sanitary management. Seven oh four, maintenance, maintenance. Seven oh five, safety. And seven oh six, property records. It's recommended the board of directors approve these policies for first reading. Second. Any discussion? I would like to say, I had a question about facilities planning because one of the things in there, and I got some feedback from Sean Lockinger on this, he reviews our policies. There's a statement about the fact that the school district will do an annual census and hire census enumerators and that's part of the school code. You know, as we talked about it a little bit, he told me that, you know, this is a part of the school code that still exists, so therefore it's integrated in our policy, but that we do not obviously hire census enumerators. I don't believe we actually do a paper census. We don't contact families on an annual basis, but we probably do manage or maintain some form of documentation of families that we, we know. Is that correct?
Yes, and through the families that we have asking them to provide this information on children younger than kindergarten.
Okay, so we do have some information, but it may not be complete. Yeah. I think it would be somewhat onerous if all districts were required to actually hire census enumerators to do an annual census and go door to door every single day or every single year and, and try to figure out, you know, who lives in each household and if they have any, any children, you know, the census is required according to school code for kid, for children birth through eighteen. So that's just an aspect of that that I was, you know, curious about. Any other, any other thoughts about any of the policies that you may have reviewed? This would be on display for the next month for first reading.
I have a question on the seven oh four.
Seven oh four?
So I can just speak loudly. I just wanted to make sure we're now looking at the main as a little bit more and I know that we've done some psych visits along the way to note a few things that I didn't know what concurrent practice was. Obviously, we're now asking the principals to take that on or how will they handle that in conjunction with other duties and responsibilities?
They are not, when you say taking that on, they report to Mr. Perzouy to make sure they have a list of what needs to be done in the building. He is going around the building on annual visits and then, you know, myself will also go around toward the end of the summer and do checks in each building to make sure things have been done.
So, I mean, to me, maintenance is not an annual thing. I was looking at maintenance in the one building.
True.
I mean, every time we take a set visit, not for Mr. Perzouy's fault, but you always find something.
True.
You know, sometimes some things leave out, you know, some things have a local order report. So, I think it's more of a diligence among all our staff that something comes up, make everybody aware of it. It only makes a better condition for everybody. It could be a safety issue even, it's just making everybody's mind a little happier.
I understand. The other thing that I, I noticed, policy seven oh five talks about the requirement to have workplace safety teams and, and meetings. And I was curious as to whether we actually conduct that activity as specified in the policy and administration assured me that we do. That's great, great to know. Your windows are open. It's raining out. Okay, any other, any other questions or concerns about policies for first reading? So this would be voting on policy G through L. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Business functions, Mr. Gill.
Thanks, Dr. Hamburg. It's recommended the board of school directors approve an agreement with on-hand school aid subject to solicitor review to provide a software-based solution known as EdInsight to use to manage and share educational and administrative data. Determine the agreement in two thousand nineteen twenty through twenty-one twenty-two and cost twenty-six thousand three hundred a year, one eighteen thousand a year, two the same year. This replaces Performance Plus previous software.
Second. Any discussion? Would you rate it?
Regarding our current software, is this because our existing licenses requiring a software?
The software that we currently use is more aligned with PowerSchool. We don't use PowerSchool, we use Skyward. We vetted at least three, maybe four.
Now it's closer to six percent.
Closer to six different programs. This was the one that the team felt was the most useful for the district. It's actually a savings over the Power, Performance Plus, I believe?
It's, it's pretty comparable. You know, most of the data warehouse schools are, are right around the same cost. You know, the, the timing of it now is this time next year, Skyward upgrades, and we didn't want to have to do the Skyward upgrading and have to replace our data warehousing at the same time. And like Dr. Phillips said, Performance Plus is changing their product to align with PowerSchool and since we use a different student information system, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to shift to Performance Matters, which is the new product, Performance Plus.
And our contract with them would have ran out in October anyway.
Correct.
So we would have used it for a month and then you would have switched.
What does the software do?
Data warehousing, whether it be anything from Dibbles to Star Math or Reading, certain types of assessments.
Student data.
Student data. And it's all housed, sorry, it's all housed in one, one area that teachers can access.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It's recommended the board of school directors approve budget transfers in the amount of twelve thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars.
Second. Any discussion?
I do have a question. Now, the first, the first one says transfer from budget reserved to community relations, serve tech, serve to pay a bill. Is that specific enough, pay a bill?
Uh, it, it's not, and what that actually would have been, should have picked the news that day. I didn't pick up on that. If I tried to, a person who puts this in the SAP spreadsheet, try to make them be specific, when we request it, so, so there's a difference. But it was, that is for the news that day.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Mr. Gill. Personal committee, Mr. Chapeau.
We're approving item A through G first, resignations, recommend the board of school directors, terms are ratified, following resignation, certificate of staff.
Could you use your mic, Tom? I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
It's recommended the board of school directors approve or ratifies the following resignations, certificated staff and support staff.
Second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to say quick, Anne Ryder, who is resigning as one of the support staff, she was actually an Exeter graduate, so just wanted to wait her while and wherever she's doing next.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It's recommended the board of school directors approve, ratifies the following appointments, certificated staff, support staff, extracurricular staff, certificated substitutes, guest teachers, support substitutes.
Second. Now, did you want to pull something from that again? So can, can we redo that motion with removing guest teachers from that, those items? It's recommended the board of school directors.
Can we also remove one and two under extracurricular staff?
Items one and two under extracurricular staff.
It's recommended the board of school directors approve, ratifies the following appointments, certificated staff, support staff, extracurricular staff minus one and two, certificated substitute, support substitutes.
Second. Any discussion?
I just also want to say again, there's a number of alumni on the extracurricular staff and one that I recognize that are certificated staff, so I just think it's cool that we have more Exeter grads coming back to be a part of the community again.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It's recommended the board of school directors approve, ratifies the following appointments, extracurricular staff, items one and two, guest teachers.
Are we supposed to separate each one of those?
In the reading? It's recommended the board of school directors approve, ratifies the following appointments, extracurricular staff number one.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Extracurricular staff number two.
Second.
Any discussion?
Are there any new positions?
Not new positions.
No new positions. No new positions. Other than the, no, the fall coach, no.
They're just winter and straight trends.
Those are the ones we have approved.
Any further discussion?
Uh, I'm going to be voting no on this because of a five million dollar deficit.
So we don't have any coaches for the kids, they just play.
Why decisions have to be made?
So do we give away the scores now or do we just give away the coaches? Which sport doesn't want to have this?
Doesn't matter. Pick one. Pick one and let's just get started because the money is, the money is leaving the accounts for, for taxing people beyond their ability to pay and something's got to be done now. We've got to stop kicking this damn camp out of there.
So according to what you're saying, the football, cross-country field, hockey, volleyball for girls, well, tennis for girls, soccer for boys, litter polo, band, they cheerleading, they should not have any kind of management and we're telling all the students that those who are standing in those, those specific activities teach them leadership skills as part of the whole system.
I'm saying that we're spending entirely too much money, we have to start going.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
On opposed? Motion carries.
It recommends the board of school directors approve, ratifies guest teachers.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On opposed? Motion carries.
It recommends the board of school directors approve, ratifies the following requests for achievements of status, administrative staff, certificated staff, support staff.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It's recommended the board of school directors approve the attached list of course requests.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It's recommended the board of school directors approve the attached list of staff conferences.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's recommended the board of school directors approve or ratifies extended contracts for the summer of twenty nineteen for the following employees.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It's recommended the board of school directors approves updated job descriptions for the following positions, supervisor of mathematics and standard education, supervisor of literacy and E S A.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Chapeau. And Mrs. Stratton's not here, student functions, is anyone here to report his student function to that P U? Mrs. Wilson? Did you just point at her?
She's, well, she's on the committee, so that's why I pointed.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too.
I kind of tried to the bus, but I was seeing.
You okay? Want to do a shot?
All right. It is, um, it is reported in the field trips below. Who has to say first?
Move on.
Okay. Um, within the sixty mile radius, I'm going to approve senior high Spanish students to Philadelphia with the Spanish exchange students on September twenty-first for day of sight seeing and senior high ninth grade students will travel to the B C T C East campus on October twenty-second and twenty-third and to the B C T C West campus on October twenty-second for tours of the students.
I did, it's a, it's a report, so there's no, there's no vote.
Oh, okay. I just looked up. Okay.
Yeah, you're good.
It is reported that a student, high student has been given permission to attend Exeter Township Senior High School as a non-resident senior for the nineteen twenty, twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year in accordance to policy number two oh two.
Second. I'll just, it's just recorded, so we're good.
My bad.
Um, it is recommended that the board of school directors approves tuition agreements between New Story, Wyomisne and the Exeter Township School District to provide special education services for students number six four zero one nine two zero and number six four one one nine two zero for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year at a cost of three hundred eighty dollars a day per student, which is sixty-nine thousand one hundred sixty dollars per year per student for a total cost of one hundred thirty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty dollars.
Any discussion?
Question. If the student, one student's referred to as being a student that's already got exposure from the university, why do they disable the board? How far are we able to go?
It's a group home student in our, in our district. So they're in our district, so we have to provide, sorry. The student lives in our district and a group home, so we provide the services and go back. It's a procedural procedure.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves memorandums of agreement understanding with Exeter Police and Central Burke's Police Departments as required by the Pennsylvania Department of Education's safe school submission pending review by the.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves the recommendation of the committee regarding the residency status of students number six four two one nine two zero and six four three one nine two zero.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Very nice job, thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Athletic committee, Mr. Carricks.
I don't have any regular athletic committee report. I do want to check, do you, Bob, do you have anything to talk about with Alex Holbrook? Because that was the only thing I was going to say.
I'm going to have to touch that, is there someone to touch on now?
Well, I, I just, and I'm sure Bob will touch on it again, I just think. So recently, a student on the cross-country team while they were running for a practice was hit by a car. He was seriously injured. It wasn't life-threatening, but he has a lot of road to recovery. He's very fortunate and he's, and he's made a lot of recovery thus far. Unfortunately, a good amount of his teammates got to see him struck by that vehicle and I know that it was traumatic for a lot of them. I know that they've been really coming together as a team and I just thought that it was worthy of note for the way that some of the boys reacted when that happened in order to come to his side and, and act almost as a first responder to clear the scene, make it safe for him, follow him to the hospital. And I just think that we're very fortunate to have young men who are able to react and respond in that way and that have responded since in a very positive way that's been contributing to a lot of team building. way that's been contributing to a lot of team building, so I just wanted to make a note of that, quick.
I think that's, that's well noted, I, the only, and I, I totally agree, the only thing I would kind of clarify is that what I understand wasn't a district practice that this occurred, it was, um.
You, you, yeah.
It was outside of the district.
Running club.
It was a running club and not, not a district function. Thank you. Any other?
Thanks for the clarification.
Anything else, uh, from the committee? Curriculum programs curriculum committee, Dr. McClendon.
Your good mic. What's your worst?
Not much.
Speak loud. Are you a teacher?
It's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the purchase of the following textbooks for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, grades five, six, science for sixty-one thousand, biology for sixty-four cents, without verification, Fos, next generation science place, um, senior high biology, uh, ten thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars and thirty cents for ninety-three years.
Your mic works now.
The biology, yeah, the biology books, um, and for senior high civics, fifteen thousand thirty-five dollars and twenty cents for hundred sixty years, American government, uh, books plus digital foreplay.
Sorry. Any discussion?
I think that the number needs to be modified.
The twenty sixteen, that's what?
No, we'll be, uh, number two, for example, we talked about the ninety-six seventy-two, but then we forget about the shipping and handling, we talked about number three fifteen thousand thirty-five and the three. And I end you with math on the stuff above, but I'm sure that number, that looks actually like, it might actually have the right number in there. So just something to figure out there. We might want to modify the, as we look forward to the. Which we can say as correctly would be, you know.
The accurate totals were reflected at the curriculum committee meeting this evening, and the, the cost breakdown for five, six, science, Fos, the sixty-one, five, sixteen, sixty-four, um, that's correct. Biology comes out too, it's just over ten thousand dollars. I don't have my calculator, which, you know, I can't do that in my head, sorry. And civics is just over sixteen thousand.
So do I need to be reading all of the breakdown as well, you said?
No, no, we're just, we're telling numbers, we need to include shipping and handling, charters, whatever you're just.
Cool. Well, it's, it wasn't.
At least for ages two. It must be three.
Two, uh, two and three.
Yeah. So we're only at one right now?
How many books are we talking about, the three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars?
Which, which?
Science, science, yeah.
Well, but the, uh, the, the, uh, Fos kids, Fos is hands-on science, so you're not just getting books, you're getting science materials as well, you're getting some specimens, you're getting, you know, things like, like beakers and, you know, right, you know, that kind of thing, so, so yes, I agree that shipping and handling is high, but that's because you're getting materials, honestly, and I've, I've shared this with several folks, but personally, I feel like every company should waive shipping and handling, if we're going to spend this kind of money on textbooks, that should be free, and, you know, we try our best to get that waived, and, you know, they, they're greedy and they want to call it their.
Use Amazon, bro.
Yeah, yeah.
Any further discussion?
I, I just wanted to touch base on something that I, I talked with Patrick about a little bit earlier regarding the American Government textbook. I looked through the textbook and one of the fourteen chapters is devoted to state and local government, so it's not that there's one chapter for each, there's one chapter for both of them, and state-local government is a prominent part of American government, it's extremely important, I could list off a number of different things that I would say affect how local and state government affects our lives far more directly than the federal government does. So I just hope that moving forward, and I understand that it's probably difficult to find, uh, high school-level textbooks that go deeply into local and state government, but I, I just hope that that's going to be reflected in our curriculum, uh, that it is extremely important, that, to my knowledge, no graduate of Exeter Senior High School has gone on to serve in the federal government in, uh, elected capacity, but you can see a few alumni around this table that have, so I, I think it's extremely important that we're talking about local government and state government, especially as it affects the district so directly, far more than the federal government does, so I think it's, it's really critical that we stress that to them, um, that it's inter-curriculum and features a prominent role and not just a week out of however many weeks are in a semester or in the year, so. That's my spiel.
No, that's a, that's a, it's a very, very valid and important point. One of the areas of curriculum that we're looking at next year is at the high school level, we're looking at, you know, now that we have social studies kind of aligned and where it needs to be in that five to eight space, kind of continuing it on into high school and looking at individual courses and making adjustments as needed, um, the, the standards that social studies courses and curriculum is aligned to is the C three framework, which is a very heavy emphasis on being civic-minded, um, and there's now a requirement at the state level that, um, students at some point in their high school career take a kind of a civics exam, um, and the state's allowing districts to use questions from the U.S. Citizenship, you know, test, uh, our department's going to pull some questions from that and then some from their own, and it's going to be an assessment that will be given when students take civics at some point during that semester when they have the course. Their point is, is absolutely noted, and as we do that curricular work next year with those high school courses, you know, we'll make sure that, you know, that's an equally important part of the course and not something that is just glossed over.
Well, I think it should be fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five. I'm, I'm advocating for that, I probably won't get there, but it's more like maybe ninety-five and five. At least that was my experience, and from what I can hear from kids that are in the high school now too.
I think when you're looking at something like that, Mr. Paris, I think you have to have a curriculum based on what the teachers could put together, I think a publisher is not going to customize something to Pennsylvania and you're going to do this class or I mean, et cetera, because each municipality, every state will have their own unique set of walls, but I think that it would be somehow it could be incorporated within the curriculum that the teachers could develop that criteria, I think it would be more appropriate than asking for a publisher.
I, I, I don't disagree. I, I'm, yeah, I don't disagree.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, facilities committee, Mr. Brady.
First, I am just recommending the Board of School Directors or authorizes the district administration to advertise for bids for the Exeter Township School District project, junior high school chiller plant and piping, chiller controls.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves the E C E F and Exeter Alumni Association to engage in a joint Eagles Nest project, subject to solicitor review as outlined in the attached document.
Any discussion?
I'd like to invite the director for fundraising for E C E F, they should give a brief introduction to the program for everyone, because it is something we're going to be looking at going forward, is a non-cost item for the district, I thought we'd bring it, give a little black down.
Thank you, Adam.
We met, um, with the facilities committee yesterday to go over the project, um, E C F and the Alumni Association together have done the, um, Exeter Eagle project, the brick project there, and we've done that over the last year, so we appreciate you allowing us to do that. The presentation was included in the board packets, um, there is a wishing well that one of our board members feels very strongly, um, for us to do in memory of.
Toni Kroll.
Sorry, Toni Kroll. Toni is a graduate, but also a, um, longtime employee of the district, so, we originally had some bigger, grander ideas on what to do with the project, and we've kind of scaled it back a little bit, what we want to do is also include some main benches along the drive as well, so, that's our, our plan, um, to do this, and it will be phasing into the future just as we have with the Eagle project, um, but, um, we, we're excited for it, um, as reported later in your report, um, Allison, we have, over the last year with the new bricks, have raised a thousand, eleven thousand dollars, so split between the two organizations, um, we feel that it's a good opportunity for members to, as we said last night, to lean in, to be able to be involved and to be a part of things and to have their memories served on, or to honor someone for donation or for retirement, so. Questions?
I think one of the unique, the nice things is this, and I don't know if you mentioned it, maybe I just mentioned it, the location we're looking at is the overlook, we'll call it the overlook hill for the football team, where you'll see a number of individuals, we'll typically pull up with their young kids or some older people, like, will pull up to watch a football game on the grass hill, so not necessarily going into the stadium, but by putting wishing well out there, maybe they'll make a donation, also, the individual from the Alumni Association, Chris Keen, he's going to be working on getting signs, sponsor signs that would be mounted on the fence, and he's selling those, they'll sell those to raise additional funds, and that'll be on an annual basis, the benches, which we're just mentioning, would go in that same location, so they could be used during a game, or also for those who are just going for a walk in the neighborhood or watching a baseball game on the JV field, but I think the idea has a lot of merit, and I think it would be a nice addition to the community.
Questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Personnel committee, Mr. Chapina, no report. Policy committee, no report. Student functions committee, Mrs. Stratton.
She has no report.
Mrs. Stratton, yeah. No report.
You'll learn.
Technology committee. Mrs. Station.
I, I do have a report. Excuse me. We are on track for delivery of replacement of student devices in grades five and ten. Replacement iPads for K three three have arrived and are being prepared. E-ray infrastructure, switch, and wireless projects are approved by the, the F E D and items are ordered. Since June tenth, the eleven professional development courses were run by tech integrators, ranging from teaching digital research skills and integrating technology into the classroom to over ninety teachers, so I think the technology department is doing a great job in, uh, involving our students in education through technology. So that is my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Station. E C E F Foundation, Mrs. Wilson.
Yes, uh, last month I reported on the money that we received from mini-grants, and there was a few extra things that we didn't have covered, but the May Days Committee donation, um, money was able to provide the following additional items for each school, which covered everybody then on our list that requested funds. Um, at Jackson Walt, Mrs. Jenna Conroe, three hundred seventy-five dollars for the STEM Integration Kit, Mrs. Katie Schneider, four hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents for flexible seating, and a hundred seventy-seven dollars and sixty-three cents for library books. At Lorraine, Mrs. Josie Whitney will be receiving three hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents for coding OSBots, and Mrs. Sherilyn Reading or Smith, four hundred, four hundred and seven dollars and eighty-five cents for Dash Robots, and two hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty cents for library books. At Abbot Creek, Mrs. Bogus will be getting four hundred and forty dollars and sixty cents for Action Kinetic Learning Kit for health and P E, and there will be five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty cents for equipment upgrades needed in the TV studio. At Reifden, one thousand dollars will be combined with the twenty-five-hundred Mascarot Respect Grant, which is covering the cost of two ADA tables to be purchased and installed near the playground. At the Junior High, Ms. Oats will receive four hundred fifty dollars for breakout EDU kits, Mrs. Umarina and Mrs. Sowers will get five hundred dollars for learning ally, ally audiobooks, and there will be fifty dollars towards the Fall Green, Fall Dream Girls' STEM event. At the Senior High, Mrs. Carolyn Woodford will be getting two hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifteen cents for thirty-two German novels, Mrs. Pinkerton, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars for two four-by-eight art display panels for the main lobby, and a hundred and eight dollars and eighty-five cents will be used toward the purchase of the auditorium's new sound system. So that was the six thousand dollars donations from the May Days events, um, and was handed out to the school district, thanks again to John Casades and his event committee and volunteers in addition to the vendors and attendees of this annual event. The high school Eagle statue, uh, brick project install date is tentatively set for the first or second full week of August, and information will be posted to the E C F and the Alumni Association's Facebook pages, um, as the project begins and throughout the process. Hopefully that the rain now means that those first two weeks of August will be sunny. A portion of this project has been deliberately placed with blank bricks, so that we can open up the project yearly for graduation gifts, memorial bricks, et cetera. In total, the first phase has added eleven thousand dollars, for which E C F and the Alumni Associations are splitting. The annual golf tournament is set for Friday, August second, at Riden Country Club, the committee is working hard securing sponsors and golfers for this annual event. Thank you for, to our community for graciously supporting E C F and the important work that we do.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Perks Career Tech Center Joint Operating Committee, Dr. McClendon.
So I just had a couple of things in addition to the, uh, Joint Operating Committee meeting groups that are in the packet, but one is about the continuing educate, education program, uh, might mention that is a self-sustaining program, and Jerry, this is for you, no tax dollars.
Why do you always point at me with this?
No tax dollars to run the, the continuing education, and in fact, in twenty, for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, uh, uh, school year, it was, they had a profit of two hundred fifty-four thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars. For twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the school year, they're looking at, um, this is for the continuing education, they have initiated to become registered apprenticeship program, right now they only provide, um, classroom instruction, so they're looking at adding that, and the other thing was about the STEAM camp that was held in June, uh, they gave a report on that, that's the, that's the camp where the seventh, eighth graders can go for a week, um, to the, uh, east and west campus, so they had over seventy-four campers, and they had, um, choices of eight different programs, each student participated in five programs, and they had, uh, there was a lot of positive feedback from both the students and the parents, and there was interest in expressed in returning to the camp or also enrolling in the, um, the B C T C programs, this is really good, I hope we have, uh, extra students out there to. Yeah, I'd like to know, because that's really, uh, very, very good program.
The continuing app program? The continuing.
It's the St. Go- Girl STEAM program at the summer camp for the seventh and eighth graders. Yeah, so it's, it's a, it's a really good program, and so, our next meeting is August twenty-fourth, we do not meet in July. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. McClendon. V C I U Board of Directors, uh, every July, the V C I U Board takes a month off, so there are no, there is no V C I U Board meeting in July. Legislative liaison, Mr. Gellum.
No report, Dr. Hamburg, I'm sorry, I didn't have time to put anything down.
You're busy. Township Borough Liaison, Mr. Chapina.
The only thing I have to report is, um, Vinny Bean Combe, the liaison for the township, reached out to me and is looking to set up a meeting, uh, with me, he, and the Township Operation Director and the Township Manager with an unspecified agenda at this point. Keep it posted.
Do you have a date yet for that meeting?
Possibly the twenty-sixth.
Thanks for that report, Mr. Japina. Supervision report, Dr. Phillips.
Hey, Dr. Hamburger. The summer consists of a lot of activities across the district, cleaning buildings, processing orders, accepting delivery of materials, and of course, the ongoing professional development that has been occurring. Highlight from these last few weeks was our Leadership Week. The administration team spent three days. One of the days, we discussed the flexible instructional days, which is now an option. I know Mr. Japina brought it up at the last board meeting. We have discussed a plan. We do have one going forward. There'll be more information to come on this because we'll be reaching out to all stakeholders to make sure they're on board with what we put together. As, as spoken by Alicia Leonard, we had a presentation about mental health, drugs and alcohol, and vaping, which was very informative. Certainly learned a lot of things about vaping, one in which a lot of students are asking for Amazon gift cards so they can buy their vaping materials. So I had to question my nephews who used to get Dick's Sporting Goods cards and now they're asking for Amazon cards. So it's interesting. Didn't know that one. We also did a book study, Smart Leaders, Smarter Teams, in conjunction with Leadership Week. We applied what we learned in the book study in an escape room activity. And special recognition to our secondary group administrators. They were the only ones to escape. Do you wanna stand up and think about representing the group?
I appreciate the, the nod there.
There you go. And then to, to go a little further on what Hunter was talking about, the Alex Holbrook, uh, event. Tragic as it was, and to see the students come together, there was a fundraiser held last night at the Wyman Singh, uh, Bakery Restaurant. Hamid is, and everyone knows who Hamid is. He is just such a super guy, a great supporter to Exeter, even though he no longer has businesses in Exeter. Uh, he hosted the event. I did get a chance to, to speak with Alex. He's surprisingly progressive. He's walking on a leg that has pins in it and a big titanium rod. He's got, he's, you know, stitches under his chin. He's got a bunch of false teeth that he's working on. This is a fifteen-year-old student. Got a big cast on his, and smiling and, and talking to people. The other thing that I thought was really nice to see is the other teams from the other school districts. I mean, I saw Mifflin T-shirts. I saw, um, trying to think of somebody else. I saw Conrad Wiser. So, you know, it's really become a, pretty much of a, a lightning rod. And it's really nice to see people stepping up. And it was packed the whole time I was there. And then I saw Mr. Aaron's, or Mr. Aaron's on his way in. And that probably stayed packed after a while. So it was a really, really nice event to support him. You know, I, I kind of offered the support of the district going forward. I mean, you know, he's in a, he's in a bit of a tough spot, so we'll, we'll stay behind him. That is my report.
Thanks, Dr. Phillips. Is there any board member who desires to be heard at this time?
So many things. Sorry.
Mrs. Page.
Yes, I want to talk about, uh, this was in the writing Eagle the other day. It says that the new state budget is a boon to this, this, the public schools. And it said that, um, Exeter, uh, between the basic and special ed is going to be getting, um, it's, our budget will be eleven million, one hundred ninety-four thousand, nine hundred seventy-one, which is an increase of three hundred thousand, three hundred twenty-five. Now, Ann, do you know how much money that the, a special ed is getting as compared to how much the, um, regular students are getting? Do you know, was that breakdown at all?
Oh, specialized is getting about one-third of that.
So about a hundred thousand.
So they're getting a hundred thousand and we're gonna get like two hundred thousand, is that... All right. Since that wasn't in the budget, how are, are we gonna put that in the reserves or what else?
No, it wasn't. I did include it in the budget.
We had had those figures below narrow.
I used whatever, I used what the governor, uh, has proposed.
Oh, had proposed earlier before, before, okay, good. I was just wondering about that. And, um, they also had another report and it was, it was saying that, um, this was, this report was written by the Auditor General, Swally. He says that is unnecessary standardized testing is costing Pennsylvania taxpayers eight, eighteen million dollars. I, I kind of think that's, that's kind of true because, you know, this testing every year and every year and every year is kind of like, ridiculous, I think. And, uh, I don't know if anybody saw this in the paper? So what did you think of it, Dr. Phillips?
I agree with you, but that doesn't mean the state's gonna change their mind. This discussion has been going on for years about the efficacy of testing and it's a one-day thing. Should that how schools be judged? But, you know, as I saw years ago with the, you know, No Child Left Behind, the representative from, or it might have been a senator from Iowa said, who's gonna vote against that? Leaving children behind, leaving children behind. So testing is here and I don't think it's gonna go away.
Well, maybe we can talk to, um, someone in the federal government and see.
We had a nice discussion with, uh, our state, Chrissy Golehand. She's got all our rights, if you will, and she's gonna fight for us.
Well, I think it is good, too, to note that in two thousand fourteen, when they passed, when they passed every Students' Seeds Act, which repealed No Child Left Behind, they made a good amount of incremental steps that I think were passed one or two increments to give districts and states more authority to, uh, be more flexible with the local districts. So I think that they know that we're headed in that direction. That, that's what I hear on C-SPAN every time I watch. I promise.
I'll hold you to that, doctor.
Talking to my friend Pat across the room on her tests. Did you see the article this week that came out for PSBA regarding using SATs in place of keystones?
I, that was not PSA, it was PSA-driven. That was someone, someone was behind that, yes. Someone was behind it using it as an alternative testing.
That was, I don't, that was the essence of the article.
That came from, that came from the term.
That came from the article, uh, recommendation.
Yeah, use the SAT.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's, that's a good method.
I'd rather use the ACT.
It's just because it's more mathematical.
No, because it's actually fair, it's fair, it's actually, you don't get, you don't lose points for being wrong. And it also covers science.
Wait, in the ACT, you don't lose points for being wrong?
Versus SAT, you get points.
Are there any other, uh, board members who'd like to be heard?
I just, I just wanted to ask how we're doing with staffing for the new year.
Well, my research, right now, we're on, on track if we can ever keep a long-term sub-music teacher.
Yes.
They are a hot commodity right now for contracts, so we've lost our first two that we've had provisionally. And we're out there looking for a, I don't believe we found one yet, Mr. Flam, a long-term sub-Spanish teacher.
No, no applicants.
No applicants.
No applicants. We lost the one, only one we had to a contract.
So do you know of anybody?
We are actually looking.
Elementary?
Yes.
Any other comments? Just wanna say that the board will be adjourning to executive session after this meeting for personnel matters. At this time, I'll accept a motion for adjournment, so. Richard, thank you. Thanks, everybody.